I'd like to call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka? President Byrne?
Here. We have a core president, would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Are there any citizens that are here tonight that wish to address the board? Okay, no. Alright, moving right along here. Let's see what we've got. Well, appointment of Kevin Timoney is village clerk. Okay. And I hear the oath of office for the clerk, right?
Mayor, can we get a motion to approve the appointment as well?
Oh.
Motion so made.
Second.
Motion is second. Motion carries. Alright.
Vote.
Got to vote.
Oh yeah, vote, yeah.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? President Byrne?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Okay, Kevin. Alright, raise your right hand please. Aye Kevin. Timoney or Ta- is it Timoney? Timoney. Okay. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village clerk according to the best of your abilities. Okay, well you got to sign it and I sign it. Never the twain shall be.
Congratulations.
Alright, hey, congratulations. Okay. Oh yeah. Alright, we got Ramesh Canaparredi.
Is that good?
Is that close?
Canaparredi?
Okay. Want to step forward please?
So we need a motion for this as well. I would like to-
Yeah, is there a motion to-
I would, I move to appoint Ramesh Canaparredi to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, you want to step forward, Ramesh? Okay. Aye, state- Having been appointed to the office of the Board of Fire and Police Commission in the village of Vernon Hills in the county of Lake do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Illinois and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of Board of Fire and Police Commission according to the best of my ability. Okay. Well signed and- You know, are we, are we making a list guys? So he'll be there about, what, forty hours a week? Really? Alright, you want to rethink this thing? Yeah, I don't care. Here, you about to sign this and I probably should sign this, huh? You sign, sign on the inside, you can keep the black copy or black folder. Alright. Moving right along. I just wanted to announce that my neighbor Craig Warner, who's an old goat, his crew, the Sea Lark, which is a J-105, won the Mackinac Island race today.
Wow.
In his class. This is the second time Craig has won. The last time was nineteen eighty-seven. But he's been doing this now, I think this is his thirty-third year. But he's been an old goat for a while and in any event, they won. They, there's other classes, you know, there's different classes, but his class won, which is, you know, a major accomplishment. Three hundred and thirty-three miles and everybody's in good shape.
That's exciting. Yeah, and it was upwind almost the whole time this year.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, he's up at the island now, I guess, celebrating with all the other sailors, blah, 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 him and his family are coming back tomorrow. I already called the press, which is never represented here anymore, Mick Swazlick, and said, "Give this guy a call," but it's pretty cool. He's only, what is he, sixty? Shit, he's about sixty-eight, you know, and he's still going strong, so. Anyway, congratulations. And there's one other old goat in town, and that's Bob Foley. I don't know if anybody knows Bob from Saint Mary's of Vernon, but he's an old goat too, so.
You keep referring to that term. Do you mean greatest of all time or?
No, old goat means you, you have raced in twenty-five consecutive Mackinac Island. It's a very, very prestigious society that you have now joined.
I wasn't sure if that was just your own term for him or-
Well, Lisa, I hear her calling there periodically, but I just hear that through the back door, you know? So in any event, yeah, it's the Old Goat Society.
Thank you for clarifying.
There aren't that many people in it, so. And it, okay, so other than that, what do we got here? Village manager, there will only be one board meeting in August. Scheduled for August tenth, which is a Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes, the second.
Yeah. Okay, everybody okay with that?
I'll be back, yep.
Okay. No assistant manager, no finance director, no chief. Public Works Director, Village Manager Dave Brown.
Thank you very much. On the consent agenda is an intergovernmental agreement with Countryside Fire District, wanted to prize the board ahead of your vote. Periodically, we are contacted by different entities as far as maintaining their fleet. We've had conversations with Countryside and some, some of the calculus has changed. Two years ago, L-Funk retired. We ended up hiring Scott Churchill as our new crew leader. He's worked for a car dealership previously and so he understands the billing and items like that better. And we also looked at man-hours and our capacity to take on an additional twelve vehicles. We will not be maintaining their fire trucks. Our lifts cannot handle that G-W. But we think it's a really good deal because they are within our jurisdiction, another taxing body. We have some capacity to take this on. I may end up shifting some workload from Fleet Division to some of the other divisions to do it, but we'll be gaining some revenues and they'll get better service. So I do recommend you approving that on the consent agenda.
Okay, any comments or questions from anybody? Alright, we'll address it then. Okay. Next is the ambiguous vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A through F?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, unfinished business, approval and passage of ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash one zero four. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of a golf simulator for the municipal golf course. How much does that one cost? What do we got, what's the number on that?
Twenty-seven thousand dollars. It was budgeted for thirty thousand dollars in the current capital budget. Vince Juarez is here from Kemper Sports. He might be able to help us with more specific-
That'll, we won't start using that till what, after January first or something?
I think it's for this fall, but Vince will help us with more of those details.
Yeah, so the plan is to start using the simulator in November as a-
You can state your name for the record.
Vince Juarez with Kemper Sports. The plan is to start using the simulator in November as the weather starts to kind of taper off and snow starts to fall in the area. We've got leagues and other outings that we'd like to start marketing for the simulator over, over at the golf course and like David Brown said, the bids came in at twenty-seven thousand. It's coming from a company called Forsight Sports out in California and we'd like to get it operational as soon as possible.
Well, how quick can we take that down when there's a party?
We could take it down in a day, less than a day.
Where's it going to be located inside?
It's going to be in the dining-
The dining room.
In the dining area.
Sort of on the, kind of the northwest corner or dining space?
Really in the center of the dining room. It's got extensions. It requires about fifteen feet from hitting area to net, to the front of it and it's got extensions that come down to protect from any errant golf shots that might go off to the sides.
That would be important.
Yep.
Well, which, at least a couple of the leagues there I know do hit errant shots, so.
Meaning me.
Well, with that, so the, so the tables will all kind of fit around the things.
Correct.
Or they could be in the middle. What's the surface, there a surface or is it just the carpeting from the room?
Just the carpeting on the floor, but there'll be, there'll be a hitting mat to actually hit off of.
Yeah, I catch ya, but the hitting mat, when we got a lot of people in there, that could be moved?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. I just think, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, man.
I was just thinking, you know, if there's a football game and the Bears are actually playing well, sometimes people show, show up there to watch the Bears.
But I think this will be able to work around.
Yeah, yeah, that's what, I'm just asking, you know, yeah. Yeah, well, you got the high boys and you got the-
Well, you might also have some people who want to, while the game's on, actually play it, so. It'll be racing revenue.
Not anything gonna happen.
That wouldn't work though.
No, that ain't happening if somebody's at games.
You have to, you're gonna have to take it down if there's any, any other use in the-
Yeah, if there's any private events, correct?
Yeah, if there's, yeah, not if it's just watching a football game, I mean, you know, Christ. But I wouldn't want somebody in there pounding balls while we're watching the Bears game.
That's a good point too, but-
You know.
Is there a revenue, your revenue anticipation on the weekends versus the week? How much you're bringing in on the weekends is significantly more than the week? And does that affect?
We ran, we ran an ROI projection based on Wednesday through Sunday and based on October through March and looking at approximately twenty-five thousand in revenue for that, for the first season.
Where's the bulk of that revenue during the week do you anticipate?
Friday, Saturday bulk of it.
And is it by time, like, like thirty-minute increments or is?
We would rent space by the hour, hour increments.
Well, and if you pull in a league, the, the, one of the steadiest leagues at the course for many years has been that Monday night league.
Yes, during the week, yes.
Well, those boys would play during the week.
Oh yeah?
Yeah, during the week is, is fine, but I mean, if there's a-
You might even get a league, continuation of the league.
Yeah. Alright, well, for our, I don't want to ruin our viewing pleasure for all up there to watch a big game. You know.
Mayor, if, if the Bears make it to the Super Bowl, Public Works has no issues with taking it down for those events.
If they actually take off a little, because I'm sure, you know, the Justin Fields is gonna be playing probably after the second game. They better put him in.
Is Public Works gonna be responsible for taking this down or something?
We will be working with them on it and if we have staff time to do it, we will assist them.
How many people does this take or how long does it take to?
It could be, well, the, the structure itself could be taken down rather quickly, within a couple hours. You know, it's, it's a simulator in a box, so it comes, the screen, the sides, the sides break down rather easily. The projector would hang from the ceiling or from a cart behind everybody. So it's really just taking down that screen area, which can be done in a couple, a couple hours.
Yeah, alright, well, okay.
And yes, we will support taking it down. We would appreciate advance notice so things were more scheduled, but yes, we would help do it.
Are you gonna leave the projector or you haven't decided whether or not you're gonna put it on a cart versus?
We haven't decided whether it's gonna go cart versus up high. If it goes up high, it'll stay.
Yeah, we got a high ceiling.
Yep.
I don't, you know.
Just put it up there.
Well, I'm sure you and, and Dave and Mike Atkinson can figure that one out, you know? Up on a ceiling makes sense, you know? Yeah, you know, what the hell.
Unless there's an opportunity or need to take it elsewhere for some other events that you can rent it out or something like that.
Nah. We're not gonna.
Why not?
I don't, you know, you know.
Humble is?
We're gonna, this isn't gonna change the, the revenue stream of the golf course. People playing golf and having parties.
Do you know what the hourly rate is gonna be or hasn't been determined?
Twenty-five dollars per hour per, per player is what we've run some financials at, run some projections at. That's not set in stone at this point, but that's what we ran some projections at.
Who's our, I mean, there's gotta be somebody else doing this somewhere around here.
Oh yeah, we've got several facilities.
No, 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 other competitors. There's gotta be. You know that for-
There are, yes.
Okay. Do you have a simulator where they have people come in and hit, you know, pay?
Yeah, there's one right in Libertyville.
Ex-golf in Libertyville?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright.
I have one quick question. How are you going, how do you control other players playing on it, friends coming in and just jumping in on the simulator? Do you have ways to track how many hours the operation in is and then comparing it to the revenue that you're bringing in that day to make sure that there's no extra playing being done without generating revenue?
Yeah, we would take tee times under our normal point-of-sale system to make sure that all the players that are, that are using it have checked in and have paid and that there's no-
Theft of services?
That's a good way to put it, yes.
I'm trying, you know?
Yes.
That's my point, so if you have like, say, eight hours worth of tee times booked, we have a ten hours in the day to play and there's two hours that are empty, is there a way to check if those two hours are being used on the simulator? And compare it to your P one six?
You could check computer time to see when the computer launched.
If somebody didn't pay, you just turn the damn thing off. There's no screen to hit it. This is fun.
If somebody's letting them, that's my point. Somebody's letting them play and not turning it off or looking the other way, that's revenue that we could be booking that calls and says it's booked up.
Yeah, I think that would be a different conversation if, if that were happening.
Well, Kevin and his, and his employees will have to know how to operate this thing, you know? Alright, it sounds like it'll be entertaining, you know? It's probably better than we golf, right?
Yes, yes.
We had that time, but we still do probably under the big TV. Oh Christ. I remember, we had a league one time, I remember that, that was pretty damn good. It was funnier than hell, you know? Plus, I'm sure the bar will be open, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, alright. Okay, alright. Is there a motion to approve this entertainment device slash simulator for, what is it, twenty, no more than twenty grand?
Twenty-seven.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash one oh four, authorizing the finance director to execute payments to Forsight Sports for the purchase of a golf simulator in the FY twenty-one twenty-two budget year in an amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars.
So made.
Motion is second. Roll call please.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
You know, all I heard was the twenty grand.
Twenty-seven.
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 I know it's twenty-seven. I heard, it was, you know, it was under budget. It was, I thought you said something, oh, it's in the twenties originally, so.
It is.
I, I went to twenty instead of twenty-seven. I'm sorry, apologize. Okay, well, with that said, what else? Anything, any new business to come before the board or?
I have a few things.
Communicate, yeah, sure.
So first of all-
Back to your opponent.
Thank you. I'd like to offer my condolences to the Takaoka family for the untimely passing of Craig's mother-in-law, who just passed away the other day. I just came from their house for a Shiva event. And we're sorry for Lisa and the family.
No question.
Secondly, Craig was gonna bring something up, but he asked me to do this in his stead. The board members received notification from him recently. A few weeks ago, there was an event in Mundeline where some of the Vernon Hills residents, basically the Epstein family, along with someone else, were successful in saving the life of a three-year-old who had fallen into the water at Diamond Lake and he wanted to honor the Epstein family and so we were looking to have, have a proclamation signed for the next board meeting, which will be on the tenth of August and we'd like to invite-
Was that Mundeline Fire Department assisted or?
So, actually, the Epsteins were just at the Shiva, so I was just speaking with Jamie about this. We'll go into it more at, at next time.
Okay.
But basically, they-
Oh yeah.
They, they witnessed a mother searching for her daughter in the water and the whole family like jumped in the water and, and along with some, someone else who was on a kayak, who he actually pulled the child out and, and one of Jamie's daughters assisted in CPR. Child was pulseless and, and-
Child's okay.
Child is fine.
Yeah, that's great. Oh, that's great.
So, so we'd like to offer that. And the third thing I wanted to point out, I wanted to thank Mike Atkinson for assisting in, we were successful in having a assisted, I don't know what the proper, the most proper term, term is.
Accessible?
Accessible space, not handicap, but an accessible space. An additional accessible space to be installed at the Atworth at the request of a family friend of mine and it took several, several meetings on Mike's part to, and communications at least with various parties to get that done and the family was very appreciative. This is someone who's wheelchair-bound and it was very difficult for her. And just having that extra spot is, it comes in. So it's not reserved for that person, but currently there is only one spot and so then-
Oh, okay.
So in, on the south side of the Atworth, so. This was very, seemed us to be very easy to, to add an additional spot. It took a few more phone calls perhaps than necessary than should have, but, but we were successful in getting that. So I just wanted to, to mention that and then if anyone else in the community has other issues like that, you know, we're, we're here for you.
Okay, anyone else? Have any new business, communication? Okay. Alright, well then, is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting and go into the committee at all?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Any names? Okay, the ayes have it. Board meeting is adjourned. I got an aye voted.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, alright. First item, I'd like to call the committee at all meeting to order. First item is approval of the committee at all meeting minutes of June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Epstein, I wasn't here, I don't think, for that one. Is that accurate? Yes, probably is. Yeah, thanks. Okay, motion carries. Alright, what's next? Centennial Real Estate, who's here for that one? Oh God, alright. Did, Hal, you can cup up to the presentation author and do you have something to present to me?
Hal?
Before, go ahead, you know, identify yourself.
Okay, good evening, mayor, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen.
Do you have anything to-
I, I don't have anything for you, but I knew, and I, I told the village attorney, I knew you would ask me that, but after I spoke with you, I found out that check runs are only run on Thursday, so I will have it for you next week. Unless you, you know, want to take a personal check from an attorney tonight, I could do that.
For who?
For me, but it wouldn't be any good, but you could take it if you want.
Okay, what, and how much is the check?
Three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Three hundred and eighty thousand?
What is it?
Eighty?
Eight or eighty? Eighty. Round up, round up to three eighty. Yeah. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, and it's because we've expensed a lot of things.
Exactly.
Probably lawyer's fees, right?
Jim would probably say not enough.
Yeah, he doesn't do any-
I would say that too loudly.
Can you both say?
But I'm not one to throw stones.
Can you be in a duo, say pro bono?
Sure, I'll say pro, you say bono.
Bono.
That doesn't count.
And so-
Alright, well, that's great. You know, why don't you bring it on Friday and whatever you're gonna, or you're gonna go sailing or something?
I was told it's gonna be cut on Thursday and so I should have it by Friday and then I'm just told the village attorney, I'd like to meet with him like on Monday or Tuesday of the following week and exchange the check for those papers he has for you to sign. That hopefully you'll do that tonight and then we can exchange, and I'll give you my signed papers, you give me your signed papers and a check and, and we'll be good.
You gonna come up here and do that?
I am.
Wow, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah, that's, you know, that's worth having a meeting with him.
It's the, it's the redevelopment, if anybody's wondering, it's the final redevelopment agreement and reimbursement from the developer for the village attorney legal fees in negotiating the, the RDA, Kane McKenna's fees in negotiating the RDA and Chapman and Cutler's fees in negotiating the RDA. The developer has, will be paying for all those fees and those are TIF eligible expenses that at some point will be reimbursed to the developer.
How about Dave Brown looking at all kinds of engineering stuff?
Oh boy, I forgot about that.
You didn't look at anything? Come on, humor me, Dave. Alright, fine.
And so, we're here tonight, first, I'm here tonight with John Michelle from Centennial Real Estate for Hawthorne Mall. I would like to note that I'm, I could be a member of the Old Goat Society and-
What's that?
The Old Goat Society, you said you have to be sixty-eight, so I could be a member.
No, 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 no.
I know, I heard.
Wait, wait, yeah.
But I, but he also made reference to the guy, you know, being sixty-eight, so I could call him.
That's the only thing you, well, that's the only thing you and Craig have in common.
That's probably is, I don't-
Because this guy's the commercial airline pilot retired and he also knows how to sail a boat.
Yeah, you're correct.
He's the faithful navigator.
Yeah, you're correct, yeah, that's probably all we have in common is our names.
If all the systems shut down, he can do it by the stars. So they like him.
I imagine and he's obviously a good sailor.
He's all, he was a great pilot too.
Right.
So you don't have anything in common.
I, I, I'm really, I have no talents other than the law. And some, you know, might question that, but.
Yeah, okay. Once a mouthpiece, always a mouthpiece.
Exactly, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have about, what, what we're here on is a request to expand the previously adopted village ordinance that authorized certain locations within the Hawthorne Mall to be, to be developed with restaurants that serve alcohol. Your zoning ordinance is somewhat unique and it says every restaurant that serves alcohol is a special use, so not only do you have to go to Liquor Control Commission and satisfy all the state and local requirements for getting a liquor license, but you also have to get a special use permit, you have to get, go, get over a zoning hurdle. And so, what Westfield did previously was identified certain areas within the mall that would be kind of pre-approved from a zoning standpoint for restaurants serving alcohol, so that, you know, using a development term, those areas would be like shovel-ready. So, anybody, so that Centennial could market these sites for restaurants, uh, and, and the potential restaurant user would know that the zoning part of the, uh, develop, of the restaurant use getting a special use permit was already behind us. So, what we asked for is to expand that based on the now development of Hawthorne Row and the new outlots that are going in on Milwaukee Avenue, so that that zoning aspect is behind us. Uh, we took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I, I know, uh, Mr. Atkinson was gonna talk a little bit about it, but, you know, was favorably received unanimously recommended for approval by, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's, that's about it.
Trustee Cook?
Yeah, just to make sure we're clarifying, yeah, this is just that it creates additional special use area, already existing, but every liquor license that would come in would be the same as any, uh, current liquor license, it has to go through all the same, um, channels than any other-
Correct.
liquor license. It's just, this is just sort of housekeeping, saying the area's okay for it, but-
Correct.
It, it doesn't-
Doesn't pre-approve anything.
What's the number of licenses you want?
I don't think we know that.
Oh, you know what I'm saying?
They don't know.
I don't think we know that.
I don't know.
Well-
We're just identifying an area where they could ask for them.
Well, there's probably more than one area.
Yeah, it's-
Oh, man.
Pretty much the whole mall.
As you, well, no, as you know, the, all we're doing is we're dealing with the new areas, so as you know, the new Hawthorne Row development has a retail component, and it has a residential component, so this would now expand the permitted areas to the retail component of, of the new development, and then also the three outlots on Milwaukee Avenue.
Sure, sure.
And...
What about, um, where the expected bandshell will be? Is there any chance that there might be temporary vendors?
Well, again, this is not really, uh, that's come before you before on other requests, like a temporary use,
Yeah.
or like a kiosk in the mall, we've had that, that's a different issue.
Well, would we need to-
I can help you with that. It's, uh, the way we've handled that in the past on other developments is, the liquor license, once it's, first of all, for trustee Cook, yes. Specifically, what's before you tonight is just putting the zoning in place for restaurants serving alcohol. Each restaurant individually will have to go back to the Liquor and Licensing Commission. If they have outdoor dining, that'll be the opportunity to make sure it's enclosed properly. If there's questions about percentage of liquor sales to food sales, those questions can be addressed as well. This is just simply zoning for tonight. Um, regarding, um, uh, the number of licenses, they're unable to answer that because they don't know how the spaces are gonna lease out. There could be an area that has three restaurants, or it could be just one restaurant as well. Um, and then your, your last question, sir?
Oh, so my question was, uh, on the map there, the white area just to the left of the-
Oh, yeah.
The hash-marked area, if there's a temporary, do we need to, in advance, identify it as a permissible area?
All right, thank you.
Or do we do it on the, at the spot?
For special, okay, for liquor licenses, the Liquor and License Commission will approve a specific liquor license for, at that time, we'll know right where the space is, for that specific space, period. So, even if that restaurant wanted to be a part of a special event on the plaza area-
Right.
The way we've handled it in the past is, they come before the Liquor and License Commission, uh, to request approval for a special event license.
Same as has been done with, um-
Melody Farm.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, but we don't need to identify it in advance as allowed within a hash-marked area in terms of zoning? We can just do it at the time?
Correct, because it's a special event, it's a one-time or one weekend or something like that, it's not, it's not in perpetuity, so zoning approvals are not required.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the hash-marked areas are, are parking spaces, right? I mean, on this map?
Well, no.
The hash marks show Hawthorne Row, which is the Sears redevelopment, it shows the three outlots along Milwaukee Avenue, and the two outlots-
Those are hash marks? I'm thinking about a football field hash mark.
Oh, uh, yeah.
These are like honeycombers.
Simons?
Crosshatch.
Crosshatch, yeah, honeycomb crosshatch.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
I'm trying.
So, is-
Uh, okay, trustee Schenk?
So, it sounds like to me that we're just trying to give you authorization so you can market your space and say, hey, it's pre-approved for zoning for, for liquor licenses, and the question is, you know, do we want how many liquor licenses potentials in there? Do we wanna limit it to say up to six, up to seven?
This isn't even about limiting, this is just saying that it's allowed there.
So, you could potentially have-
We can limit it later on.
You could potentially deny them if they come in for a license, if they came in under the pre, the reconception of, hey, I thought we had a liquor license po- possibility here. So, I just wanna make sure that the, the tenants that are moving in here, how do you clarify, you're not gonna guarantee, you can't guarantee them a license by saying, hey-
Correct.
Because they still have to go in front and prove their-
Yeah, well, yeah.
It's just the zoning.
You know.
How many, so you got the three outlots, and how many units of commercial space do you have in that other area just south of the, um, uh, the bandshell area, would you say?
Uh, the total retail space is like twelve thousand, right?
Fifty.
Fifty thousand.
Hi, John Michelle, Centennial Real Estate, good evening.
How you doing?
I'm good, how are you, sir?
You got your son, would you?
I do.
It's nice.
Yeah, he's, he's learning the business.
What's, how old is he?
Eleven, tomorrow.
What's his name?
Matthew. Happy birthday.
Matthew, happy birthday.
Make sure you take a price for him tonight.
Did you wanna come to this meeting tonight?
Being grounded, you must be punished.
What, is, is the punishment or something?
It's a learning experience.
Okay, all right, you have the floor.
So, the, um, the Hawthorne Row, which is the area on the middle that's cross-hatched, is forty-seven thousand square feet and change. The area up against the mall, the existing mall where Dave and Buster's entry is, which is also cross-hatched, is approximately thirteen thousand square feet. The total inline GLA is sixty thousand square feet, not-
Not counting the outlots, then?
Not counting the outlots, which aren't measured by building GLA, that's about five point one acres on Milwaukee.
Yeah.
And approximately point seven-five each on sixty.
Okay. Well, with that said, um, all right, well, I, I mean, does anybody have an issue with this, or, you know, okay?
No, it does just change the zoning, so.
Do we need to change the zoning to allow for alcohol, where we already have the tenant there for the, that one cross-hatched place is where the, uh, the mattress store is?
Uh, we do not need to change the zoning, they're asking to put zoning in place for the mattress store, uh, in case a future, let's say the mattress store doesn't make it in the long term, it would give them the ability to market that outlot, uh, to a restaurant that may or may not serve alcohol. That's the reason why they're asking for it there.
Right.
Uh, you know, now-
Do we need to approve that now, or shouldn't we just-
New type mattress store concept.
Yeah, like drink and sleep and-
Well, if theoretically, if the mattress store wanted to bring a, a, a drink concept to the liquor commission, they would have to get the license approved by the Liquor and Licensing Commission, that would be the opportunity to consider the details of any request. Right now, they're-
I mean, I get that, but, but from that standpoint, why not just say the whole thing is approved, you know, it's, if, if we're gonna say, let's wait till before any of those discussions at the licensing phase, why, why are we, if we know it's a mattress store there now, why include that in an alcohol service area, instead of if the mattress store goes under, then, then-
Well, that doesn't mean we're gonna approve whatever's going there, you know?
It's a semantic kind of thing, but it's like, why, why are we doing, it's-
Just clean it up and get all the outlots in, you know?
Just blanketly do all the-
Well, can I bring up a, a question? What, what, in our, in our liquor, uh, license ordinance, we have the right to limit the number of liquor licenses, period. What are we at now?
You have done that already, you're at thirty-five, I wanna say, class A licenses.
Everywhere?
Thirty-five, class A.
Yeah, there's a maximum, as, as the board knows.
So, that, what, what is a grocery store, not a class A?
No, class A would be-
It's a G.
Okay, so you, you, you with me there, Jen?
I understand, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Where in the other case, we have, what, we got probably eighty, ninety of them all over town?
Yeah, depending on the classification, and what we do with each liquor classification, uh, when a request comes in that the liquor commission approves, there's a subsequent ordinances that raises the maximum number allowed by one. Conversely, if a, if a restaurant that serves alcohol goes out of business, you'll notice a-
Decreasing.
An ordinance on your, on the omnibus agenda decreasing it by one, so we mean, we always maintain it at the maximum level, and, and that's the way we operate, and it just gives an ex-
Exact level.
Yeah, it gives the-
Yeah, so I mean-
That gives you the ability to not create a new one.
The extra level of control.
That's what I was gonna say, that's kind of a failsafe, right? Okay, we're at thirty-five.
We're at our max.
So, you got thirty new ones that wanna come, we can say, uh-uh.
To, is the, uh, the current alcohol service area, um, is that inclusive of the entire mall currently?
I can show it to you here. This is the lower level plan, so what you're seeing to the lower right is the lower level of Dave and Buster's, and then to your left is Maggiano's. When you get to the second level, you see the upper level-
Acclaim.
Of Dave and Buster's, yeah, Acclaim Company, and then you see the corridor leading to the lower level of the movie theater.
Right.
And then, uh, then you have the movie theater itself on the third level. These are the areas that currently have zoning in place, uh, for restaurants serving alcohol. And so, tonight's request is really to expand that or to amend the original ordinance,
Yeah.
um, to include these areas, the cross-hatched areas. So, we're really, this is just a continuation and consistent with approvals that have been in place, uh, in the past for the mall.
Can I, can I bring up, uh, the, some of the covenants that exist, you know, with your existing, I guess, inline stores right now? And, and what you guys probably adopt, I mean, inherited and controlled, is germane to actual gambling operations.
Not familiar.
Well, I was gonna tell, well, there is a restrictive covenant on not having them, you know, like the one-armed bandits-
Okay, I mean, I assume that there is, but I, not, it's-
Hell, you'll have to give them some advice on that. 'Cause I, I'm, I'm almost positive there is, so booze and gambling kinda go hand in hand, so, could you figure that one out?
Sure, I, I, I'm, I'm certain that you've opted out of gaming, there's no video gaming.
Oh, we have, but I think even before that, I think the mall had a, a covenant that said, hey, you know, you gotta have, maybe you had to have a vote on it, you know, amongst the tenants or something, but you guys are the ma, you know, I mean, you guys owned all, you know, you, you have a big vote as the, the owners of the, uh, the mall, except the, you know, the anchor stores, but... I just, I just wanted to answer on that sometime, you know?
We'll look at the covenant, if there, if there is one, I'll talk to Hal, but I think the, talk about a failsafe, the village has opted out gaming, so video gaming will not be allowed in any of these facilities, unless you change, this board changes, it's mine, relatively.
Well, yeah, they, you know, you know, at some point, I guess we could on, on that, but I mean, I-
So, you wanna motion to direct staff to prepare?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to just get on the record that the re, a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission was unanimous, six in favor, zero against, in recommending approval of the special use permit, allowing restaurants to serve alcohol in certain locations. For tonight, staff is looking for a motion, directing staff, uh, to prepare the ordinance approving the special use permits subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet.
So made.
Second.
Motion to second, any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Markworth?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll see you on, what, uh, what day you meet with us?
Monday or Tuesday.
On Monday, I believe, we'll meet.
Monday, okay, Frank, Hal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd also, I'd also add that John and his son were at the Sox Double Hutter yesterday.
Were they?
They were, they had box seats, and they saw, they saw, they saw a good couple of games.
I hope you stayed till the end of the game, John.
We stayed till the sixth inning of the second game.
Okay.
Well, you didn't see the walk-off homerun?
We, we were in the Uber line when, when we saw the fire.
Oh, you know, that's pretty, that's pretty good.
We were there for six hours.
That's pretty good.
That's impressive.
So, you're actually a Sox fan?
Red Sox.
Red Sox? What, which, what Sox?
Red Sox.
Well, that's not who they were playing last night.
No, they were playing the Twins, but to date, man-
Well, that's too bad if you're a Red Sox fan, you know, they're good. We enjoyed beating the Red Sox three in a row in two thousand five, you remember that, don't you? In the playoffs?
No, he's turning eleven, so no, no.
No, I'm not talking to Matthew, I'm talking to his dad, you know, remember that?
We only remember the wins.
Yeah, I remember the three wins that knocked you out of the playoff. What, the scores of the game? First game was fourteen to two.
Okay.
And then the second game, I wasn't at, so I don't remember that.
Okay.
But I was at the first game.
We were rooting for the White Sox last night.
What's that?
We were rooting for the White Sox last night.
That's good.
And it was great, it was good fun.
All right. Matthew, are you a White Sox fan?
Nope.
No.
Are, are you from Boston or something? Okay, great.
Fenway's amazing, I've been there.
That's gonna be still like town, Brady.
No.
No?
Yeah, well, what are you gonna do?
Now, he's a goat.
All right, well, take care, good.
Thank you.
Bye, John.
Good night now.
Bye, guys.
All right. What do we get next?
Is that it?
Great, Lake County.
Lake County Public Works requests a waiver of site development, building permit fees. Do we even have to have a discussion on this?
No.
Does anybody wanna put up a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion to second, roll call.
Trustee Takahoka? Trustee Markworth?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Oppenheimer?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, and ju, just for record, this is gonna be over by, what, the existing utility building near White-
It is gonna be due east of the existing maintenance facility for the golf course.
Yeah, oh, that's why Lynn's here.
Just south of it.
What did you thi, what, what do you think we're-
She thought we would change our mind at the last minute.
What'd you think, we're going south on you? Oh, that's no pun intended, would you? White Sox fan. But motion carries, did I say that yet? Okay, is anybody else here for that one? Are you, live by-
Lake County Public Works.
You live by Lynn?
No.
Lake County Public Works.
Lake County Public Works.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, sorry we didn't get to discuss it with you.
Hey, Lynn, you can go back and watch the end of the Sox game, though. All right, okay, Lynn, take care. And, uh, Lake County people, oh, hell, okay, just keep moving. All right, what's next?
South Lake Industrial Center.
Yeah. All right, who's there for South Lake Industrial Center? What do we got here? Oh, is this on the building where you're gonna eliminate the-
Forge Club and the-
You're gonna eliminate the, the, uh, docks and all that stuff?
Correct.
That's good. Great.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I present, uh, just a brief summary of what happened at the Planning and Zoning Commission first?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, what's in front of you right now is the proposed site plan. Uh, it's, uh, it's the parcel, uh, of land that's located just north of Lifetime Fitness, uh, and it is, uh, immediately east of the existing, uh, development that was approved for Panatoni Development. This would be building E, and it would assemble three lots, one of which would be the vacant portion of the Darling Farm. The second lot would be the former Forge Club property, and the third lot to the north would be, uh, vacant property that would be purchased uh, from Chuck Lamb Fear. Staff strongly encourage the petitioner to buy that third lot so that we can get a connection to Corporate Woods Parkway that would lead us to a signalized intersection to Milwaukee Avenue, uh, so we can get truck traffic safely northbound on Milwaukee Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Commission, excuse me, here, let me... The building will look pretty much like the buildings that are out there right now, it's precast tilt-up panels, uh, there'll be two-story glass curtain walls at the main entrances. Uh, and the color scheme also will be, uh, the same.
This building has much more glass on the Milwaukee roadside than the other buildings.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, yeah, that's, that's true.
What's your name, please?
John Pagliari, with Panatoni.
Yeah, I get, you got a shirt on, I saw that.
So the Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on June 9th to approve an amendment to the ordinance that originally approved the planned unit development for South Lake Industrial Center. To approve rezoning of the Forge Club property from B1 to BP, uh, site plan approval, landscape approval, architectural approval, subdivision approval, and plan of subdivision approval. You know, I could go through the details of each request. They were, the recommendation was unanimous to approve with the exception of one item. The Planning and Zoning Commission, on a separate motion, considered the three-quarter access onto Milwaukee Avenue. And a vote of two in favor and four against recommended not allowing that access to Milwaukee Avenue. So, uh, that was the one item that they did not recommend approval. Otherwise, uh, what, what is before you is a unanimous recommendation to approve. I also wanna point out a couple other things. You'll notice, uh, let's see.
You wanna talk about loading docks?
That's what I'm on right now, if you see the third elevation down from the top, that's the south elevation adjacent to, uh, Lifetime Fitness. And if you look to the right, you'll realize, you'll notice that there are no loading dock doors there, those have been eliminated. Uh, they would've been adjacent to the swimming pool, now, uh, all loading dock doors are adjacent only to the back of Lifetime Fitness.
How many loading docks would've been beyond the Lifetime Fitness building footprint?
There was.
Down towards Milwaukee.
There were three.
There was three that had to be relocated or eliminated, that's correct, sir.
And you know why I made the request, right?
Just for the swimming pool purposes, I'm assuming.
Yeah, and plus you could, so if you moved the three somewhere else along that wall?
Correct.
What a mi, it's a miracle.
Easy to do before you build a building.
Yeah, I thought, you know, but. How that slipped through was not, you know, kinda disappointing, to be honest with you, you know?
Well, we've got.
Hey, let's go swimming, and there's an 18-wheeler, you know, unloading, you know?
Yeah, on that same subject, Mr. Mayor, you'll notice this on the screen in front of you. Enhanced landscaping along that area that would be adjacent to the pool as well, and also note the berm, the, I think it's about a three and a half, four-foot berm as well.
Yeah, good.
So the doors were eliminated.
All the way up to Milwaukee.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Screening was enhanced, the berm is there, and the doors were either relocated or eliminated. And thank you for that feedback, sir.
Yeah, you're more than welcome, I'm glad you guys were able to.
Sure.
Cause if you didn't, you, those doors were gonna be gone. You know?
We follow rules very well, so it didn't.
All right, uh, Trustee Markworth?
I know, one of the things I wanted to bring up, and that I did have a talk with you, Michael, and also with Dave in regards to, um, the access, uh, ingress and, uh, to, from Milwaukee in there. And I know they voted, I think it was two to four. I'm still, uh, to the point of overriding that, um, I don't see a problem with it. And if, if I do have a problem, something would you tell me, I don't see the problem with, with having access from Milwaukee Road.
You had to make a left if you go northbound?
There are three, left, right, but again, it's a turning lane area.
Yeah, I can help with that, um.
Would be left in and then a right out?
It, it wasn't the in that was the problem, it was the out.
It was a right, it's a right in, right out, left in, is what we're proposing.
So essentially, you can make all movements, but you cannot turn left to go north on Milwaukee Avenue. We've, uh, we've had experience in the past with American Hotel Register before they had a traffic signal. When I look at this from a traffic engineering standpoint, we wanted to make sure that they were successful too. So some of the things that, uh, they have done, uh, at staff's request is they did acquire other properties, they negotiated, uh, under contract, uh, or, uh, they, they worked really hard to acquire some other properties to make this development successful. What I really wanted to see is a connection to Corporate Woods, they were able to reach some sort of accord with Van Vlissingen. That brings them to Corporate Woods and Milwaukee Avenue where it's a signalized intersection, and they can make that maneuver going, uh, northbound. Um, in terms of the plant commission and their recommendation, um, I have touched base with at least one plant commission member. I rarely, uh, disagree with the plant commission, they do a very good job. In this instance, I really think, uh, let's start, start with passenger vehicles, passenger vehicles can readily turn in and out of this site, I have no concern whatsoever. I think their concern specifically was, uh, trucks leaving onto Milwaukee Avenue to go southbound, and, uh, the speed of a truck trying to get up to speed compared to other vehicles going southbound, um, I don't see that that is gonna be an issue. Ultimately, if it became an issue, I don't know what your thoughts are as far as, uh, some, uh, agreement that if that becomes a safety issue that things change and you would force the trucks to go to Corporate Woods, uh, to the traffic signal.
For the record, IDOT approved a full access there, at this intersection, not a three-way, but a full access, four-way. So they're the traffic pros, but Dave and Mike really wanted us to go with the three-quarter, which we thought was, uh, fine, so that's, you know, that's what we did.
Let me clarify that, I know IDOT has given a review letter on that, ultimately, they have approved all, they're asking for some additional details before they actually approve it.
Put together drawings for that, right, which we wouldn't do yet.
But I'm supportive of access being off of Milwaukee Avenue, is my recommendation.
Well, and on that, what I would like to see then, is that be included into our agreement tonight.
Okay. Trustee Cook?
Well, you've also, since the planning commission meeting, if I'm looking at these drawings, right, softened that right turn?
Correct.
Which will allow a, a little easier exiting for, for the trucks?
Correct.
Yes.
Made it wider?
Yeah, well, yeah. Not made it wider, but made it a softer turn.
A softer radius.
Not as, yeah, much softer radius, which allows you to get the truck rolling a little faster.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, uh, Trustee Schenk?
How many, how many trucks do you handle in a day? Do you anticipate to handle in a day?
You know, hard to say, because it's a spec building, we're not sure who's moving in there, this is not a high distribution location, you know, we've built, buildings on an I-55 and I-80, and that's where you get a lot of truck traffic, this is more of a light assembly, uh, pick and pack type of area, uh, small businesses, so, you know, hard to say really, but I, I wouldn't think more than a couple an hour.
Are they 18-wheelers, or are they?
18-wheelers, sure, there'll be 18-wheelers and cars, potentially vans. But focus on just the, I was.
So you're gonna have, you're gonna have the signal at Lifetime basically go across to the Forest Reserve?
Correct.
So I'm looking at a Google map here.
Yep.
And then just to the north, approximately.
Corporate Woods Drive.
150 feet, may, I mean, I'm not sure how far that is, from that signal to that intersection, trucks accelerating, 18-wheelers out of that intersection. And prior to that, you got cars coming, I think it's about 45, before the last, the signal coming northbound, where's the signal before that, up by Sam's Club then? So they're moving pretty quick, and you pull a truck out there, how far do they have to merge on to Milwaukee Avenue?
We're looking at the exact number to answer your question, but before I answer that, we've had experience with American Hotel Register before, before they had a traffic signal. They were able to turn right without any difficulties of other vehicles impacting them and rear-end collisions. We had no experience before the traffic signal was installed of any concerns such as this.
So after American Hotel tells light, then the next light is the first light that goes into Corporate Woods?
There's, uh, yeah, Corporate Woods is the next signal.
That's the first turn.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, well.
And what is the downside of just routing truck tra, keeping that, but keeping truck traffic out of that ingress egress and putting them through Corporate Woods? Obviously, you have, according to this plan.
Especially if there's only two.
Two an hour.
Why, why is it such a big deal? Well, first of all, I wanna be convenient for those trucks, we hate to mix cars and trucks, so now you're mixing cars and trucks, now the trucks are forced to come through our car parking lot. Both side, you know, on the west side of the building and then nor, uh, north towards Corporate Woods Parkway. So that's kind of a negative right there, we, again, we'd like to keep those trucks separate from the cars at all cost. And that's why we didn't build any cross-stack buildings here where the cars and trucks are mixed, we really kept it to rear-loaded buildings where the cars are in the front and the trucks are in the back.
You know, I mean, is there any way to widen what we affectionately call the suicide lane there? Will IDOT allow that, Dave? The wide, you know, just the yellow lined area that the truck could pull into when it pulls out of, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, to answer your question, it's almost 1,100 feet from that signal. It's, it's a substantial distance to allow both them to see the vehicle that, uh, they might be pulling out in front of, and to make that maneuver and accelerate.
You're talking from American Hotels.
No, I'm talking about this specific development from Corporate Woods signal, which is to the north, you're looking, uh, to your left, and you wanna go southbound. You look to see whether that car, uh, is heading your way, and if you're a truck driver, you're not gonna pull out. As you start pulling out, you have 1,100 feet to have them work through whether they should slow down. There's additive, uh, southbound lane that they could move over should they be moving slower than, uh, one would like.
But is there a merge lane that I think you were speaking of that they're gonna propose, so like a, so they pull into a merge lane and then they merge into the Milwaukee Avenue, or do they go right on to Milwaukee Avenue off the egress?
So, uh, the plant commission was discussing the same topic, they were hopeful that there would be an acceleration lane.
Correct, that's what I meant.
What I, uh, thank you, uh, what I anticipate, if, uh, they went before IDOT and asked them for an acceleration lane, IDOT will not, uh, approve that. Someone is gonna have to maintain and snowplow that area to make it safe, and IDOT, uh, has their struggles at times maintaining what pavement they have. So it, it would be rare that they would approve an acceleration lane, that's just atypical.
But you're just saying the whole right turn, right time starts earlier?
Well, they've, yeah, they've softened, they've softened the amount of, they've softened the amount of the turn, it isn't as hard a right, so it's easier to accelerate through.
All right, so, so everybody's okay with the right turn in, out, and then the left turn in, if you?
The left turn in has a turn lane, doesn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
But not making left-hand turns out of there?
No, that would.
To go north?
No.
Correct, cannot go north out of there.
That's why it's.
You, everybody's, you're fine, you can live with it?
I'm fine with the three-quarter cut, yeah.
Well, can everybody else live with it? You know?
No, I just, I mean, I have concern about the right turn out without a, what you, acceleration lane. That is just.
You know, Javier is with KLOA, is our traffic consultant, maybe he can touch on this subject.
Well, and could we, could we put in, I mean, what, um, Mr. Brown brought up about, you know, that if we should be experiencing anything in the future, this be revisited? Is there a way we can memorialize that somehow in this?
Sure, we could have a condition in there that if, uh, if, if issues are identified relative to vehicles, whether trucks or ve, or cars, exiting right out onto Milwaukee Avenue, uh, then the village board can request that the owner of that property come back before the board to re, to further review the matter. And we can make that a condition in the ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, but what, what we're saying too about.
What would the issues be?
About the whole right-hand turn thing, I mean, this guy's how, how high off the ground, like eight, nine feet, the driver? So he's gonna have a pretty unobstructed view of any cars coming south.
Correct.
In the right lane on Milwaukee, right?
Of course.
I, I don't have a problem trying this, what the hell?
To answer your question of what would the items potentially be, it'd be accident history, it wouldn't be arbitrary.
Right.
So you'd have to have some kind of accident statistic, anything over.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
2% of the cars come through there, so you have to come up, you have to come up with that formula.
Not just people calling in complaining they had to slow down, no.
Right.
And then you'd still use the road in, in Corporate Woods to get to the traffic light.
Sure.
No, wait, wait.
It's still an option to go north.
That's an option.
Yeah, you know.
Right, you, you, you need options with these buildings. You know, they're, you know, it's a, it's a big investment, and again, we're not sure who's coming in there, so you, you really like to have access options like the other buildings have. Two points to get out of the park, they can go north or south on Darling Drive, and this is kinda two options also.
You know, what, what's due north of, uh, Darling's Farm right now is that, uh?
That's Corporate Woods.
Yeah, okay. But you're, and you're gonna have, or there's gonna be a road that exits out to whatever the main road is through there.
Right, Corporate Woods Drive.
Yeah.
To the north, yep.
When IDOT approved the full intersection, was that with the signal?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, what the hell?
Trustee Schenk, uh, so in terms of Milwaukee Avenue, uh, for SRA route, uh, IDOT would require distance between the traffic signals of a quarter-mile space, and they just don't have that.
Okay. Well, this is what we wanted, you know, connectivity to the Corporate Woods Boulevard. It, what, what road is it, what, is it called Corporate Woods?
Parkway.
Parkway.
Yeah.
I remember the whole deal with Jacob, for Christ's sake, that's what we wanted, and he couldn't pull the trigger on that, so, you know? I, is there a motion to approve, uh, this, uh, request?
With, subject to?
Motion to direct staff to appear in ordinance approving the development, subject to the conditions outlined in your packet, uh, with an additional condition that should accident history, uh, relative to the three-quarter access, um, dictate, then the board shall have the right to request the property owner come back to discuss the matter and consider, uh, alternate solutions, something along those lines.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So who's determining that and at what accident rate or how, between the two of you will decide if?
Between police and, and Public Works.
And we'll call that out in ordinance too, we'll come up with language that addresses how that's done in a way that's tangible.
Yeah.
So it's not vague.
All right, so is there a motion and a second?
So made. I'll second it, go ahead. Mike?
I have motion.
Yeah.
There's no further chemistry questions, roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoka? Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Markworth?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
President Byrne?
All right, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, sure.
Appreciate your help.
Okay. You got any tenants?
Uh, we are working on that as we speak. We actually have, one of the buildings we're, uh, have under contract to sell to a large, uh, local user.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Hey, you know, you're, these are the first spec buildings in a long time.
Yeah, there's, and there's a lot of them, so, uh, yeah, we're, we're very pleased with the activities.
All right, all right, well, take, take care, guys. All right, what else we got, uh, Dave, Dave Brown, right?
Yes, um, so item number six, is that what?
Professional services agreement with, no, that's pulled. Goodwill is pulled.
Okay, so item number six, uh, concept presentation, oh, let me try that, professional services agreement with, uh, Burke Engineering for Harvey Lake Boardwalk. We do have some slides, wanted to go over some more specifics. It, this is included in the capital, uh, program, there is $180,000 budgeted for the, uh, improvements. What we are proposing, and it's been in a, a, a multi-year plan for a, a certain period. There's two different locations that we're discussing, adding a boardwalk, a boardwalk, uh, at Area A, and, uh, I don't have a clicker, so Mike, if you could help with, uh, moving the, uh, next slide? So this is a southwest corner, uh, that you just seen in the previous slide. We have had equipment stuck because this is the outfall for Harvey Lake, it wants to go to Big and Little Bear Lake, so we've had to call out, uh, uh, some services to have it, uh, our equipment pulled. What we really want to do is try to maintain the south edge of, uh, the lake, and without this boardwalk, it becomes very problematic. So, uh, next slide, sir. Other direction, thank you. So these are two more, uh, slides of that area and the difficulty, uh, of trying to maintain it. So, uh, the next slide will show a, uh, boardwalk and what we're proposing, so, um, uh, this is a type of, uh, boardwalk that Burke Engineering, uh, has installed, uh, previously, and, uh, has helped out, uh, Forest Reserve and other, uh, entities with it. But this is essentially what we need, uh, to have installed so we can get across this marshier area. You can tell it's got, uh, wood curbs along it, we're not looking for this to be the size of having a passenger, uh, vehicle, a F-250 or F-350. We're really looking at a, uh, Bobcat or a Skid steer as the equipment we need to get to the south side for its maintenance. Next slide, sir. The, the next area going to the east, you can see this forebay area, um, this is an area that presents some opportunities. If we did have this extended, we would have an opportunity that you could walk the entire lake. It's our intention to, uh, also, uh, have the permitting resolved by Burke Engineering. Engineering. Essentially, their contract would be not to exceed $69,675, but what they would do is work through all of the different permits. There's wetlands there, there's flood plain, et cetera, and so we have to work through all those permits. They also have experience with designing of these bridges, and we would ask them to put together the design. Then we'd be in a situation where we could bid it out. I didn't want to go out with a bid right now. As we all know, the price of lumber is substantial right now, and so we'd like to get the permitting moved forward, have a design, and be ready to bid it out close to the April timeframe, and we are, we're hopeful that lumber prices are, are better. I read something a couple of weeks ago that the, from the, the spike of lumber prices, we're down about 42% now, and the trajectory is really good. I think patience will help us, and it's going to take a little while to get the permit. So, next slide.
Well, you gotta get there to walk around.
You may, you may see that, if you've been out there, there are existing pier and posts out there. The original owner does, did have a bridge here before. We'd like to replicate that, and we think it's readily, we can accomplish.
How long ago is that?
Oh, boy.
Turning of the century?
We're gonna have to carbon date it. I do not really know how old it is.
We're gonna, gonna, okay. We're gonna have to make sure these are sound, right?
Yeah, and, and we'll be installing new ones. But we, we know that someone else accomplished it back in the day, and we certainly with new technology.
Where's the house out there? Is that right where it is? There used to be a.
Did you go to the first slide, please? So, the house was on the northwest corner.
This one?
Yeah, so.
B or A?
Due north of A.
B?
No, due north.
Yeah, where the house was, was.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, was, was up there.
It hasn't been given a letter, huh? Okay. Oh, yeah, right off of Lakeview Park. Yeah, that's where we wanted to put the library.
Yes, discussion of the library. We, so we do own the parcel. If you're looking at the road to the top of the page, we do have a parcel that's in between the townhomes. So, that's really the public access for us to stage equipment to accomplish the, the work. We did reach out to the homeowners association president a couple of times and also their property manager. We've also walked the site and talked to a couple of homeowners that live right adjacent to the lake. This is something that we are looking to present to the board. I, I don't see anyone who showed up today, though. But essentially, what we're looking to do is continue with the process. If the board directs us in this fashion, we would bring a contract before you at the next board meeting in ordinance form and move forward with the permitting and design. I'm available to answer any questions.
This, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm a little confused about the, the request. Is that, is this to, to build the walkway all the way around right now or just to build the access to Lakeview Parkway from Site A currently?
Yes, sir. So, the, the request is to, at Area A, have a more shallow boardwalk there, and then also have it designed for Area B, the four-bay area. So, those two areas, we would look to put in wood boardwalks. The rest of the area, we think it is a special area that we don't really want to install asphalt or sidewalks, et cetera. It would merely be something that we mow and allow people to walk along it. We mow it currently. We cannot manage the south side as well as we'd like to, but it would be permitted for a hard surface path. But our intention isn't to do that right away. We would prefer to just mow it. I don't think there's that many people who are actually walking around it, so I don't think we need to asphalt the whole world, so.
Walking around it because they can't.
Because they can't. Yes, sir.
But if they could, maybe they would.
Yeah, and so, yes, sir. So, as part of the permitting, we'd at least have it permit and ready to go should we identify the need to put a different surface down, down there? My prediction right now is it may be just a path that is grass that people are just walking along, and it serves their purpose as long as we keep it mowed and maintained for them. So, no hard surface at this time.
What is, what is this, Dave? 13 acres, 12, 13 acres? This whole, it's about half the size of Lake, Lake Charles, right? Lake Charles is about 50 acres.
Yeah, I, I think it's right in the 12 range. I know that it has one mile of shoreline.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it kinda looks cool, you know?
I've often wondered why we don't open up the, the brush that's to the west of A so that, that when you're driving by, people can really see. I.
There's been, there's been discussions on that. There's been discussions whether we should add a parking lot along Lakeview, too. You know, I, I think we have the Big and Little Bear Park system, and that's more of an active recreational opportunity. This is really a gem that we really like the aesthetic of it. Fishermen enjoy theirself going there and fishing. So, I, I think the naturalized park approach, passive, is at least our vision.
Where, where do the fishermen access this area from?
Many of them are local that live within the subdivision. They just walk over with their fishing gear and.
The shoe leather express.
But is it, I guess, are there public parking places along?
There are no, there are no public parking spaces along it. If we wanted it to be more public in nature, we do have the open space that I, I mentioned.
Those two lots.
Yeah, but it, it's just whether or not we want to add parking for, for that or whether we want less impact to this area.
I mean, is someone allowed to just park right in front of those public lots that we own there along the street?
No.
Where's that?
On Lakeview?
No, on Bay Tree.
On Bay Tree.
I don't know. I, I mean, I assume there's some parking there, right?
There, there.
On the street?
There are to meet the parking requirements for the development. There are a few recessed parking areas. You can see at the, there's a small little cleansing pond at the northeast corner, right adjacent to that. There is some parking stalls, but those are really guest parkings for the owners.
So, there's no parking allowed on, on the street, on Bay, Bay Tree Circle?
There is a limited opportunity for maybe three cars, but if that presents a problem, we can always restrict parking for those, the, the one area that is.
Theoretically, that's open, that if someone wanted to park there, it's just public street parking.
Yeah, it's not restricted. There's not a bunch of signs that say no parking.
Yes, sir. It currently is not restricted. If we desire to restrict it, we also can prepare an ordinance if that presents an issue.
Well, has, has anybody heard, had complaints about people fishing on this pond? I'm not aware of anything. You know, these guys, these, yeah, these guys are kind of adventurous to go, go out there, you know?
I guess we do have the two big lakes, right? Just, just to the west of it, but you hate to have this so, so isolated in, in many respects.
Well, it sounds like we're moving in the right direction here with this boardwalk project.
Yeah.
So, there's no, so public can access this all around this and walk all around this lake? There's no, is it a private property? Is it village?
That's ours.
So, they can, as long as they don't park illegally somewhere and they walk over there, they can walk and walk through the woods and explore?
Yes, sir.
Well, some of it's just grassy areas, right?
Yeah, it is. It is.
You know, you put your hip waders on, you can go right into the pond if you want with a life preserver.
It'd be interesting to, had they ever looked at just like a type of a trail system of either crushed gravel or just around it, or is it just doesn't?
So, the plan for Burke Engineering would be to permit it that way, and it just comes down to when the boardwalks are installed at some later date, do we want to put stone down?
Right.
My prediction right now is if we just kept it mowed, that there's so few people, they would just walk along the grass. It'd be more natural, and I'm not proposing that we really add stone or asphalt at this time. We can make that decision later.
But a mowed trail is, is a visible marker for them to walk through, which would be fine, too. If they don't want to get muddy, they don't go out there on a muddy day.
Well, I was gonna say, the only housing that's close is what, along Bay Tree Circle?
Mm-hmm.
And then, yeah, I mean, but how many feet is the, the back of the house to the water line? And there, is that water line, like, is any of their, their, their plan a survey? Do they own anything beyond their building line?
They own probably half the distance to the water.
Yeah.
At the closest point.
And, and the, the public access area is at least 30 feet wide, right? Or 40 feet?
At least 30 feet, and on the east side, we do have a path easement that we have kept in grass form.
All right. Well, yeah, you know, you, and, and again, even if it's just, but a lot of this area by, by the townhouses themselves, that could be cut. I mean.
Oh, we are definitely maintaining.
Is there bushes and stuff there now or?
Um, it's, you may recall what this area used to look like was complete buckthorn, completely around the whole lake.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We received some substantial grant monies to clear it, and we do maintain it. We have an open space contractor who's been out at this site. They will be.
Right.
Doing a controlled burn, I suspect, closer to the fall. The south side is, got a lot of frag mighties that needs to be addressed. It's just difficult to try to address it in its current form.
Yeah, okay. Well, I certainly want to give full consideration to all these townhouses that we're seeing, you know, as far as, you know, not just going in there and totally clear-cutting everything, you know, because this, that path, if we, there is a path, it'd be pretty damn close to their houses. However, if it's just kinda grassy, okay, big deal. You know what I mean? If you're the homeowner.
Yeah.
Because all the retention ponds that are, I guess, around town, there's about a 30, 30 feet of Park District easement, and a lot of them, you know, here's my back lot line, and then the Park District is 30. So, people walk around my, my pond behind the firehouse, they, they fish, you know, they fish all the time. So what, you know? It's kind of fun to watch them pull something out of the pond.
Even the grandkids.
You know, but I mean, yeah, yeah, anyway. All right, well, this sounds like it'd be a nice project. I, yeah, we'll just keep the homeowners appraised of what the hell's going on, you know? I mean, it's, and I'm sure we will.
Uh, we, we've met most of them. I've talked to quite a few of them, and we'll continue to have the conversations with them.
Yeah. Okay, well, yeah, sure. All right, what else we need to do on this? Anything tonight?
Uh, just wanted a thumbs up from the board that at the next meeting, we would present in ordinance form a contract for Burke Engineering.
Is anybody opposed to that?
No.
Everybody okay at this end with going to Burke? Or it's only Mike down there, so. Okay, well, let's do it. And what, how much are we gonna spend with him?
Uh, it's $69,675 not to exceed dollar amount.
That's a nice round figure, okay. Obviously, okay, you know, is everybody okay with it? Is there, you need a motion to approve?
We, we don't necessarily need a motion. If you, we have direction.
Build the ordinance?
We'll bring the ordinance to you for formal approval at the, I think, next meeting, right, Dave?
All right, is there any other comments or questions on this particular topic?
No, sir.
If not, is there a motion to adjourn committee at all?
So made. Second and third.
Okay. All, all in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? Uh, aye. The ayes have it. The committee, the whole meeting is adjourned. Okay, that was special. Yeah. All right, so this, you go to Kevin?
Kevin.
And we can go home or?